Accessible transport, excellent climate change and has fair rates for council services. We need leadership that combines what has worked well and innovative thinking moving forward. This approach will get the best results for our community. This is how I will represent you. My vision for Kiri Kiriro Hamilton is one with great public transport, where our children can bike safely to school whilst breathing clean air and diversity is at the forefront of our identity. The last five years he's worked in local government, leading and delivering the Tuiya train service. My council, his council experience and passion for the community makes the ideal person to lead our city in challenging times ahead. And that's what I'm posing against us. Feel free to clap. P S, please donate to Gareth, Save Gareth Fund, 123122. All ASP bank holders like, ah, it's ASP. Okay, so all we're gonna do is we're gonna do the same as last time. If you weren't here last time, the candidates have three minutes. At the two-minute mark, we are going to ring the cowbell. Or the cow. You'll hear a noise and that's the two-minute mark. They've got one minute to wrap up what they're talking about. At the end of everyone introducing themselves, will be a time for you, the people who matter the most, to ask your questions of these people who want to represent you. So you need to ask the right questions because you get the council that you deserve. If you don't vote, if you don't ask the right questions, you don't know. So I'm gonna now pass the time to, how are we gonna do this? Just go down the slide here?
That's what we did last time.
That's what we did last time. So we're gonna start from Sarah. Welcome, Sarah. So put your hands together for Sarah. She's gonna start.
Kia ora, good evening. I'm Sarah Thompson. I'm currently a Hamilton City Councilor and really proud to be standing again for reelection and standing for the West Ward. I previously worked as a commercial lawyer and also a community lawyer and have really enjoyed working as a Hamilton City Councilor over the last three years, particularly in the role of Deputy of our Infrastructure Operations Committee and also Deputy of Environment Committee. Some things that along with my colleagues I've pushed hard on over the last three years include better transport choices, also restoring our gullies and green spaces, working alongside our fantastic community volunteers to do that. And also pushing for housing choices, but at the same time ensuring that we're building neighbourhoods that we can really be proud of, that promote, I guess, wellbeing and sustainability. In terms of transport, accessibility has been a really big focus this term. So I strongly believe that everyone should have equal access to moving around our city. And along with councillor Angela, we've started some really good work around improving accessibility for our disabled community in the city. We have kick-started work on a disability strategy and we've included in our transport strategy a focus on inclusivity, ensuring that everyone can get around. So whether that be accelerating our program to improve our footpaths, having accessible curbs at our bus stops, working with regional council to have an accessibility card for everyone, including caregivers. There's a lot of work happening in that space. Another thing that I'm really excited about is our school travel planning pilot. I'd like, I'd like to see all our tamareki be able to safely walk and bike to school or scooter or take the bus.
There is one minute.
Thank you, ora. And so we've started a pilot with two groups of schools and if it's successful, we can start to extend that across our city. In terms of housing, we're seeing a lot more intensification and we need to provide for more housing within our city. Land prices have gone up 600% in the last 19 years or so. So it's critical we work on that, but at the same time, we have to put in the infrastructure to support that, while maintaining footpaths, street trees, access to green space and playgrounds that you actually want to take your kids to. Ensuring good design and ensuring we're not clogging up our streets with cars. All of those things are critical to build neighbourhoods we can really be proud of. And so I'd like to see our council invest back into our communities, particularly where we're seeing that intensification, so we can all have a really good quality of life and live here in Kiri Kiriro. I'll stop there. So kia ora, Sarah Thompson, Hamilton West.
Please put your hands together for Bruce.
Kia ora, kato. I'm Bruce Clarkson and it's important you recognise that I'm running for Regional Council and the City Council, the Hamilton constituency of the Regional Council. So I've been an environmental scientist for about 45 years, based here in the Waikato. I have deep Hamilton heritage. My father recuperated from the Second World War on Tranway Road. My mother was raised on Beryl Street, Hamilton, and they married in Hamilton East. And I was their first production. So yes, I am a baby boomer and I'm proud of it. So I, I wanted to just say a few things about why I'm running. I'm running for a number of reasons. Most of all, I sincerely believe in the old-fashioned style of community service. And I guess more importantly, I subscribe to the saying of the famous naturalist David Edinburgh. How could I look my breath in the eye, knowing what is happening to our environment in the Waikato and say I did nothing about it? I have a long history in assisting Iwi and community groups in Hamilton City with, particularly with environmental projects. You may know by whakariki based up by the Hamilton Zoo, the Big Project there. I've been the chair of the advisory group there pretty well since the inception of the park. And I was one of the first people to work alongside Hamilton City Council to get established the Gully Restoration Programme, which recently in the Nature in the City Strategy has been supported by the Long-Term Plan. I believe in sustainability in all aspects of life, not just environmental, economic, cultural and social. But I also recognise that the environment is not the icing on the cake. For the, for the Regional Council, the major task of their Regional Council is to look after our environment. It's not the icing on the cake. It's the key ingredient to our survival. And for primary production in agricultural sector, it's the soils that we're really interested in. Protecting our soils in the long term, not allowing vermin spread to cover up our high-quality soils. You all would have noticed the reason national policies state in trying to be something about that. I'm really interested in doing something about the twin wicked problems, biodiversity decline and climate change. And yes, I do believe in climate change. And yes, I intend to do something about it in the Regional Council. I'm also interested though in evidence-based collegial discussion around the council table. And I've been an observer of the Regional Council over the last little while and I've been watching the behaviour. And I'm sorry, it doesn't match with my values. And I want to see a much more collaborative, collective approach to the key issues, the challenges facing our region, working alongside all of these good Hamilton City Councilors, should they be elected. So my final statement is, I do not want to see us constrain the intergenerational prospects, the heritage of our next generation. Thank you very much.
Good evening, all. I'm Roger Stratford. I'm standing for the West Ward. If elected onto council, I will be making inquiries for the purpose of instituting a new committee. The provisional title of this committee will be, is the Colonialism Development Committee. Colonialism development will be to community as economic development is to finance. We've lost confidence in the colonialism project in the city. And we need to honour King Charles III and make him proud of the city and how it develops in the future. We are two peoples with one common purpose at very, very many occasions. On rates, we need to increase rates. I don't want to see the rates burden passed on to future generations when we can, a sad duty to solve the rate, the debt problem, sorry, the debt problem, sad duty to solve the debt problem. When I came here a couple of weeks ago, I spoke about my three injectors family, inclusivity and patriotism. I'd like to make, turn this, make the city into the most utilitarian city in Aotearoa, New Zealand. I admire John Stuart Mill and his writing on the book, Utilitarianism on Liberty and Representative Government. And I'd like to think that I can carry on, put the, put the practice principles where it's written in that book written so long ago. As to my, as to my competitors in the West Ward, there's six positions. I'm disappointed that three weeks ago, at the start, very start of the campaign, a male councillor from the West Ward complained, complaining that the election campaign had been going on too long and it was only on the first week. My view of that is that this particular councillor candidate must not be very confident of being his reelection chances. And with that, in that regard, I think it's, it's time to take it, bring some vote for Roger Stratford onto the West Ward for the Hamilton City Council. Thank you so very much this evening.
And keep your hands together for Rudy.
Hi, everybody. A little bit about my history, I suppose I haven't ever really spoken about it. I served as a councillor back in South Africa, in Skew, South Africa, for eight years, a city of four million people. That gives you an idea of the scope of what we had to deal with at every council meeting and within the committees. I was in oversight committees of so many emergency services, Johannesburg Metro Police, et cetera. I was also one of the few, we had four councillors that were elected on the Ethics Committee and I was one of the four. And that gives you an idea of where I sit in terms of what I expect people to deliver. So there's no hanky panky going on. I want and I expect the absolute best from everybody. And I think that's why you want to elect people. You want a guy out there who says, I don't accept second best. I want the best. If that's what you want, you're gonna get me. So now what do I want to stop? I want to stop the Three Waters Acid Grab. Ever heard of that? That's a, that's a, that's a top focus of what I stand for. We cannot allow central government to bully us out of our assets. It's as simple as that. Where it will go eventually, what is required to stop it in its tracks is another story. Is everything that is proposed bad? No, there are good elements to it. But I believe central government can get to a point where they can prescribe what quality levels we should have. That's where it ends. That doesn't give them carte blanche cheque to come and say, we can take your stuff, guys. No, these guys are gonna put up one hell of a fight. You're not gonna allow central government to take our stuff. Then what do I want to save in our city? I want to save precious things like the Founders Theatre. And I know some guys go, oh man, that thing's so over, just demolish something, please, get over it. But you know that there are eighty groups that do not have a home with their age-concerned building now being closed. Eighty groups that don't have a place to go and we're saying this place is perfect to accommodate those. I'll, I'll, I'll make, so, but let's see. I want to have comprehensive cycle lane plans. Ask any cyclist here, it's a nightmare out there. You can't, not safely. Sarah, you said they wanted them safely. Yeah, we want them safe, but it's not safe now. Those funny little speedhumps, talking to any cyclist, they tell you that, that's terrible. It's terrible. Don't go there. I don't want wasteful spending on useless projects like Ward Street. Yay, Ward Street, let's paint a tar and put flower pots all over the show without consulting with the businesses there. And then rapid rate increases, we've got to stop those in their tracks. Well, how do we do that? By curtailing our spending and, and become a little bit more careful how we spend money. So you want to do all those things? Have I got to do that for you? Vote for me, Rudy. Thank you.
Oe te hariki, oe. Koai o, ko donapoukei Phillipseho. Noheahoe ke uri no tai nuu. Tu farito, taranaki hokiaho. I'm a mother of five and I'm a grandmother and they are my wife. Look, we've been living in the Norton community now for nearly 20 years. Been living in the Waikato for over 25 years. What I've seen in that time is we're creating communities of haves and have-nots. My community is the have-not. Hamilton City Council decommissioned our path last year. Took the swings, took the slides, took the roundabouts away from our babies. In our community, we've got two or three children per fari, per house. And to decommission our path may not seem like a big issue to some people, but what's the message you are giving those children? The message you are giving to those children is Hamilton City Council does not care about you. Another issue, my son just bought a million dollar home in Ruta Tuna and, and good on him for doing that. He's worked really hard. They have a flash, spanking brand-new sporting arena. Now, we've got future All Blacks, future Kiwi players, future Silverfoons in our, in our community of Norton. We haven't got one of those arenas. If you really want to stop the crime that's happening in our communities, it's really important that we think about and think outside the box and create some more initiatives. It's not about bringing more policing. It's not about bringing more policing. I have a Masters in Law. I transform myself. I went from the onion patch to the legal patch. I went from the country floor to the corporate floor. I know how to transform. I'm a fearless leader. I don't have an issue putting the hard issues on the table, showing our community that there are some real issues out of, out there in the community. I've been there. I've done that. I've seen it and I know how to transform. Why? Because I've transformed myself. I've transformed my whanau. I've transformed my husband. My children have two or three degrees. That's amazing. That needs to be celebrated. So if you want a fearless leader, if you wanna, if you want to see more equity in our communities, vote for me, Donapoukei Phillips. Kia ora, ma tata.
Oh, keep going for the fabulous Jack. Yeah, my name is Jack Gillan. I'm standing for Mayor T. And also for Hamilton East Council. I'm a past the councillor, community worker, social worker. I run two trusts, the NZSPT and Families for Justice. Now, the council and councillors are taking care of corporates, not citizens denying democracy and community people power. Now, I'd like to talk about some of the problems that I see on the council. The first one is, can we make the hard decisions like the big contracts? I need to get council to be honest, reporting each week in the paper, what's going on during the week. Have they done that? Do they let you, the people, know what's really going on? And I mean with Shaw's Bird Sanctuary. Do you know what's going on there?
Nothing.
There's a lot of hidden agendas happening. And I can promise openness and transparency if I become mayor. Okay, we need transparency with no hidden agendas. You, do you really want to know what's going on behind the scenes? We all do because then you feel safe, don't you? Now, like, did you realise there's a secret clause in the developers' contracts? Now, what's that secret clause all about? Is it a backhand up? What's really going on there? Okay, now, Paula going to Wellington to meet with central government, she should go with the whole council. She needs to be open and transparent with what central government is doing. So do you think we need a report in the paper every week to let us know what's really happening? Now, did you know that the rates are going to pay wages and not services? Come on, we need to know what's, where our rates are really being spent because rates are supposed to be for services. I have three main policies. Responsible spending, let's deal with the debt and let's spend money on projects that are really necessary. Business development, a lot of the businesses I'm talking to, the overheads are so high that we're not promoting economic development in Hamilton. And also community inclusion, we need to include all perspectives. I belong to the Philosophical Society and the Interfaith Movement. I represent all churches and all understandings. I'm prepared to be your mayor in this town as father of the city. I have a child, so I know about families. Transparent administration and open meetings. Public audits and business grants. Beautyfying Hamilton, encouraging use of community facilities. Accessibility to the disabled. We were talking to the blind people and those who have impairment in there seeing this morning. Encouragement of the arts because we actually are talking about bringing policing, but we should be empowering the youth to change. Vote for Jack Gillan for mayor, Jack Gillan for Hamilton East Council. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Glenview Community. Thank you for sharing the evening with us. It's really great to see everybody here and thank you to our hosts, Suro and to Gareth and to the team for hosting us this evening. So my name is Meshwela McDonald and I'm standing for the Waikato Regional Council. Now, you've probably never heard of a candidate called Meshwela before. It's pronounced exactly as it's written, Mesh-wela-McDonald. I'm European Maori and I was born in Northland, but don't hold that against me because I got here as fast as I could. I've been here for about 25 years. My husband and I, we have three businesses in Hamilton and we have three little boys. And I was educated up at our university. I have degrees in law and management and a Masters in management. Now, for the past three years, I've worked at the Regional Council and youth development, supporting our young people to help share their vision for our community and they have some good ideas. Now, part of working at the Regional Council as staff means that I know how the organisation works. I know how to get things done. I know who are the different relationships in order to be able to get things done. So that's something that has never actually been offered to the community before. They've never had a staff member stand for council. So that's a new thing. In terms of my priorities, standing for council, I would like to see our river cleaned up sooner rather than later. The current regional plan will have our river cleaned by 2096. At that rate, we're all going to be compost and my kids will be in their eighties. I think we need to do better than that. The second thing is, as households, we all have to live within our means. We have budgets and we have to make choices about how we spend our money. At council, I think they need to live by the same priority, the same principle. Where they want to do new things, I think they need to reprioritise what they're already doing instead of just putting the rates up to cover new things. So I'm standing for the Regional Council to ensure that they play their part to make sure that we have a fantastic environment, community, economy today and the future. Kia ora, I am Meshwela McDonald.
Kia ora, thank you. I've put that donation into your account as instructed. I'm Angela O'Leary. I've been Hamilton City Councilor for 15 years and thank you for inviting us. This is our last West Ward candidate meeting, so we should probably all go out for a wee drink later. Look, I, I, there's just one thing that I want to address and in these meetings, we don't often get a chance to rebut things, but I, I want to address some of the comments made by a candidate tonight around secret meetings and secret information. This council does make some decisions in public excluded and those, 99.9% of those are commercial contracts. So if we were to negotiate and talk about commercial contracts in open meetings, we wouldn't get the right deal for you. But this council also, under the leadership of Mayor Paula Southgate, sorry, I didn't interrupt you, so that's my turn now. Actually, in every single decision that we do make in public excluded, when the contract is signed, we release that information every single time. So I just wanted to stop the misinformation around that. And actually also Mayor Paula Southgate sends her apologies. She's out there being the mayor at the moment. So the other thing, sorry, Jake, it's my turn, so if you'd be polite. The other, the other thing that I wanted to talk to you about, the Glenview community, is councillor Sarah and I, I'm the Chair of the Infrastructure Operations Committee and we're two peers in a plod sheet as the Deputy Chair. And we've just recently submitted to the Climate Emergency Response Fund with a programme of works. There's 40 projects in there at a cost of $80 million and fingers crossed we're going to be successful. But there's $6 million in there for the Glenview community. Now, this is, no. No, I'm going to get it. $6 million for the Glenview community. This is around, this is around connecting our footpaths, making them safer for pedestrians, our public transport network, our cycling network to the key facilities like the lake, like Peacock, Baida, Mahawi and the hospital. So fingers crossed we're going to be successful with that. So sometimes it feels like the eastern Rota Tuna gets all the money, but I can assure you that that's actually not the case. We're working, people like to interrupt me, don't they? That's okay. Angela O'Leary, Hamilton City Councilor, I stand for West Ward. Thank you.
Louise, that's it.
Kia ora, kato. Noa, England, Ireland, Wales, mi opi, aipu, tipepene. Hitanga tere tiaho, ke kiri kiriroa, toku kainga, nai nei, kua lois hat, toku riwa. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So my name's Louise Hatt and I'm running for Hamilton West. I've spent the past three years working in our community as Chairperson of Goeco. We are the largest community organisation dedicated to sustainability and biodiversity in the Waikato. We do things like look after our community gardens. You may have noticed, I quite like gardens. I dressed as one today. But another one of our projects that you may have heard of is Kai Volution. Kai Volution saves perfectly good food from our restaurants, from our supermarkets and redistributes that back into the community so it doesn't go into landfill. That work supports climate action, it supports our environment, but it also supports our people because that food goes back to places like our community houses and is distributed back to some of the 50% of Hamilton that earns less than $30,000 a year. Oh, my technology is failing me. I'm also a senior advisor at the COVID-19 Directorate, which is at the Waikato DHB for now Te Kato Ordo. I started off in vaccination. I set up vaccination clinics. I co-organised Super Saturday in the Waikato and I am so incredibly proud of our 96% vaccination rate in the Waikato. And we could not have done that. We could not have done that without working really closely with our community. It wasn't about people coming to us, but us getting out of our community. Hamilton City Council needs collaborative, thoughtful leadership that will help us navigate the really challenging times we're living through. Climate action has only become more urgent in the past three years and climate change is already amongst us. Hamilton City Council have set themselves that conducting business as usual is simply not going to cut it anymore. We, for too long, we have not been investing in the wellbeing of our city. We need to ensure that everybody has the opportunity for a high quality of life, whether you're eight, 29 or 80. That means collaborating with our communities to ensure they're able to be climate resilient, investing in our infrastructure and ensuring our city is well-designed and well-connected. I'm standing for climate action in a well-designed, accessible, vibrant city. Number one, Louise Hatt, Hamilton West. Kia ora.
By lunch if you like.
And moko sahun zanu.
Kia ora tato. Heuria no te nai no roto mai neki o Waikato. Ngati waiere, ngati haua, ngati mahanga, ngati naho, ngati mahuta ngahapu. Ko moko tāraki taku inua. Kia ora tato. Hey, I'm good to be back. Thank you farmer for the invitation. Choice. Hey farmer, pretty straightforward person over here. We've got some pretty good heritage and culture that we should be proud of. And one of those is the name of the city. And so I am championing, if I do get into council, there'll be birth and there'll be turn, the restoration of the name Kiri Kiri Doa back to Hamilton. And I believe there's a way in how we can do this respectfully. And I'm quite keen to work with the farmer, with our community around how we can best do that. The second part of my co-papa that I'm going to be championing. Council does have some arrangements in place. Okay, I am a strong advocate of co-governance. I am a strong advocate of co-management. And in the Waikato, we've been doing that for quite well, for 11 years. We co-govern, we co-manage the Waikato River and we do that quite successfully between Maori and non-Maori. And so that's a relationship that currently exists and can work. I am very aware of the issues that we do face around housing. I was around when Future Proof was introduced into the Waikato. I do have an environmental management background. I am familiar with the functionalities of council and so I'm coming into a space that is not unfamiliar to me. And within that strategy, there's a papakana provision. Now, I'm not too sure if that papakana provision is still there. And so I'm quite keen to champion, particularly for our farmer Maori, who thought that there was a papakana provision around housing within the Future Proof strategy. I'm quite keen to champion that on their behalf as well. Hey, look, it's also not lost on me around how we make decisions. And so I come from a, I come from a very Maori environment. But that's not to say that I'm not accountable to the whole of the community. Kapai. And so while I look around the room, there might be only just a handful of you that I'm actually able to vote for me. But that's get the point because if I am successful in council, I, I recognise that I do have a responsibility back to the whole of the city. I do want to role model and lead what I believe good teteleti relationships looks like. I think we've gone through decades of what we think teteleti relationships should look like. But I think they're not quite, I think I represent a different generation. Not quite the millennials, but I think I represent the generation where my thinking and my behaviours and what teteleti relationship looks like is quite different to how they have been in the past. So kia ora tato.
Keep those hands moving forever.
Kia ora tato, katua ko Ima Pike toku inua. My name is Ima Pike and I'm standing for the West Ward in the City Council. You may have seen my pink signs about. Hamilton is really at the heart of who I am. I grew up here. I went to Glenview Primary, a Malmo intermediate and Hamilton Girls High School. So I'm well and true local around here. I also studied business at Wintech and I have worked across the city at everything from scrap metal recyclers through to Waikato Regional Council and my current group of elementary services. So I have a good understanding of both policy and politics and of business and community needs as well. I'll also mention that I co-owned a beekeeping business and I own a residential property in Hamilton West. I have a strong vision for Hamilton Kiri Kiri Doa. Firstly, I will, I will increase proactive community engagement. I think it's important that we're going back to face-to-face community engagement, making sure that we're involving the people in the decision-making. And I've held 16 clinics, or I've held 15 of my 16 clinics across the city recently, little clinics, to allow people to come, talk to me, have conversations. And that's a model that I'd like to continue with if I were elected to ensure that there's transparency and to our communication between us all. Secondly, I am concerned about the, the high debt levels in the council. We're currently $499 million in debt. Our rates over the last 10 years have gone up 64.1% over the last 10 years. And that's a lot for our rate pads to, to hold. And so I think we started from a really challenging position and we need to ensure that we spend less smarter. Making sure that every, every dollar of our rate pads money is spent well. Thirdly, I will champion transparency. Making sure that we're sticking to our promises. So I believe my experience in, in business management and community engagement and also in, in within the community will ensure I'm a strong voice for Hamilton West. And I'd just finally like to thank Ro and Gareth and Kristen and the team for hosting us tonight and all of you for, for taking up your time. And I'll just finish with making sure that you've got your voting papers in, in the mail. And if you haven't got your voting papers yet, then do go to your local library or go see Hamilton City Council. Thank you.
Tenaka toka, tōkua ko Mathew Small toku inua. My name is Mathew Small and I'm proud to be one of your West Ward candidates this year. I'm asking for your number one vote. And the three things I'll work hard and advocate for around the council if elected will be no significant rate increases, investing in community spaces and accessibility for all. I'd like to acknowledge Ro, the Glenview Community Centre, residents in Glenview, Malmo and surrounding areas. Sarah Thompson, retiring councillor David Person and I were here over one and a half years ago having a community meeting. And there was over a proposed liquor store opening up on Preston Street. Now the community said no and we won that battle. So thank you very much. I'm not against, I'm not against liquor stores in general. I'm against lots of liquor stores opening up in low socio-economic areas. It's just taking the Mickey. So my role is a supportive living facilitator at the moment. So, and that's a key reason why I'm very passionate about accessibility. Now, the footpaths around our city are a disgrace really. In the nicer suburbs are pretty good, but after knocking on just over 3,000 doors, the footpaths are not up to the high quality standard. So with the plan that's just been completed, I will be advocating to make sure we get targets for the new plan and actually having a debate around whether trees are fit for purpose. We need to improve safety, but we need to be efficient rate power money too. We don't want to, so we want to upgrade the footpath and if the tree is no longer fit for purpose, let's replace it with a low maintenance tree. It could be native, it could be a fruit tree. What we don't want to do is come back in five to 10 years' time and have to upgrade it again. That's not good for rate power money. And that's what I would like to improve the efficiency of operational spending in council. And it's very important that if I'm elected, I am able to work with whoever else is around the council table. That's why I don't go around promising things because I might not be able to deliver. If I want to get my ideas and policies through, I need to work with majority of council to get those ideas passed. So there will be no free lunch from me. I'd just like to finish and endorse Meshwela and Bruce for Regional Council. It's been great to have you at the events. They haven't had many candidate events specifically on Regional Council. So it's important to, important that I acknowledge that. So this year, rank Mathew Small number one. Fake big votes.
Kia ora tato, ko Melissa Smith toku inua. My name is Melissa Smith. I'm running for the West Ward. So a little bit about myself, my background is in mathematics and physics. And I'm a part-time student at the University of Waikato studying a masters in environmental planning and also part-time working at the Department of Conservation. I'm a little different from some of the people in the room. I'm 22 years old, so I'm the youngest candidate in this race. And I'm really excited about bringing my perspective as a young person and getting hopefully more young people involved in our city council. So my three priorities for my campaign have been around transport, making sure we can all get to where we want to go safely, sustainably, conveniently. And Sarah and Angela have already talked well about that. I'm also really interested in our housing, so making sure we have warm, affordable, high-quality housing. Enough housing for the growth that is coming for our city. So I do believe that we need intensification in the places where that is appropriate. And my third priority is around climate change. So climate change is the greatest existential threat of our time. It needs to be at the core of everything that we do so that we can protect our city for future generations. So I like to think of these three priorities as sort of Russian stacky dolls so they all affect each other and they're all important. If we get our housing situation right, that means our transport and congestion will be improved. And if we can address transport, then we can halve our city's emissions and that is really great for a sustainable future. So our city is changing in the next three years. I'm really excited for that change. I want to be around the decision-making table so that I can bring my perspectives as a young person, as a student, as someone who cycles around the city. So as a few people mentioned, it's really not safe and I can attest to that. And I want to bring an evidence-based approach. I want to bring my passion for this city and I'm really excited to help make those decisions that are going to bring our city into the future. So I don't need your number one vote. I would really love a number one, number two or number three vote. There's a lot of great candidates here and I'm really, you know, come talk to me afterwards. I'd love to talk to you some more about my vision for Kiri Kiri Doa. So thank you. I just really want to be a part of what's going to be happening in our city. My name is Melissa Smith. I'm running for the West Ward. Kia ora.
Good evening, Kia ora everyone. How are you this evening? Isn't that good? Yeah, because the sunshine has stopped raining. Now, my name is Shanti Ram and I came to New Zealand in 1963. I got children and grandchildren, so I love them to, to have them. And my husband worked for 30, 40 years for Ontera. And I worked in the farm milking cows, starting from Devon. And then we had our own business, lunch bars. And now my husband, six years ago, I think he died. And so I said to myself, what am I going to do? I go to the hospital and sit and suck my combo just to do something. So I have done, but then I started about 20 years ago with the Glenview Community Centre. So I am with them. First I started with the seven days, six days and then slowly, slowly I come down to about four days a week. And talking about Kai Evolution and that's where we started. Kai Evolution, I do it, take the bread, bun, meat, butter, whatever they have, come from the other store, expire or maybe expire in a week. From the Good Luck Church, you know, that's on the Dominion Road, I take it and give it to the needy children. The one parents, they don't have the time to go out or their kids are too small. So that's what I do and I do the community work. And then they're talking about houses. You know, you have received all your rights and that was the submission about the houses. Chartwell, Dinsdale, Newton. There's the other couple of places, they're going to have three, going to three building houses, three stories. So you all have received it and I'm not your, what your answer is that. So I think soon the answer will be there, we'll find out when the candidate will be chosen. And then the rates, I don't want to raise the rate. I want to see my community flourish because I love New Zealand, I love Hamilton, I've always been there. And because I stand for the humanity and care for our community and the people all in it. And the other thing is racism. Shouldn't we, there shouldn't be any racism, black and white, small or bigger or whatever. Because if they're thinking going back to the world and you know, New Zealand is the first-class country and I love it. Maybe that's the reason I'm here for so long. And we talk about the climate change, that's fair enough. Everybody says we need a climate change, that's fair. But did you know how's other side of the world's happening? People are drowning. Plus in our own country and children are starving. Why don't we look after them? You know, that is my priority and I love Hamilton, I love you guys. I'm the community person, I done all my lives. And so whatever your decision, I respect that, but you please must vote. Hamilton West, Shanti.
Since the last man for not so much, it's a name in waiting.
One of the best for last day, one of the best for last. Kia ora, my name is Dan Steer and I'm really honoured to be here this evening. I've set an engagement for the day, so what better place to end the day than here in the beautiful Glenview. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it to the last, make the candidate event because I went to a tangi and then from the tangi got COVID and so I've had to take a, take a bit of time off, but I'm fully vaccinated, so I'm really pleased to be back on the other side. I believe right now Hamilton West deserves strong people-focused leadership. This is why I put my name forward to run for the West Ward. And a little bit about me, my background, I work in a community engagement role. But prior to that, I come from the hospitality, retail management and also the events industry. So I hope to be able to bring some of those skills as our city moves into the recovery stage from COVID-19 and we start to move forward. There are three priorities that I'm running on this election. First one is CBD revitalisation. So it has been a part of the events industry. I know now, I know how they have, I said that at every meeting, it always gets a little giggled. So I want to bring some life back to our CBD. Hospitality businesses struggle quite, quite, quite a lot, particularly with being able to offer a drink, you know, glass of wine or something outside for outdoor dining, that was, that was an issue. See what I can do in the next phase. The second one is parks and recreation and that is ensuring that we have accessible spaces for everybody in the community. That includes protecting our gullies and natural spaces and making sure that we have accessible playgrounds for children with disabilities. And the third one is investing responsibly in critical services and infrastructure. We have a city that is developing and growing and as it does so, we need to ensure that we have the correct infrastructure to be able to support that growth. That includes making multiple options to move around the city, whether it be cycling. Cyclists deserve to move around the city safely. Look at how our bus service is running. And part of the infrastructure is also ensuring that we have a connected city. So people can go safely and efficiently from A to B with ease and we don't end up with congested city. I've been really getting out into the community and talking to as many people as possible. I work quite regularly here with the Glenview team and we just have a chat about what's going down and the latest gossip. And so I'm really pleased to be able to be here to support the South community. Talking of community, I've also been recently started to help with the community dinners for Hamilton South and I'm really pleased to be able to meet people that have been attending those. If you've never met a community, please come along, beautiful dinner. It's all free and it's all for the Hamilton South community. I've been able to meet some amazing people. Some of the issues that residents have brought up with me here in the South recently is, and they've got concerns about the, the housing, you know, building three houses that are going to go up next to them. We need to look at that and make sure that it's actually targeted for the city. The second one is people have been really concerned about the, the lack of maintenance on the state highway over here. So we need to ask Waikato Tēi, why aren't they making our South community just grow grass and there's no beautiful gardens, there's, you know? We need to really. We need to really look at ensuring that council and Waipukatai having the serious conversations, tidy up our villages, tidy up our streets, and let's move forward. Is that the limit? Oh, right. Well, thank you so much for having me. It's been a pleasure to speak with you. Vote Dan Steer number-one for West Ward, back me if you like you. Kiura.
Do you still want the last question? We're going to have the time straight to the man. The, the, the honour.
No, just me.
The honour. Please, put your hands together for our mayor.
Good evening, everyone. I apologise for being late, but I was on a work obligation. So I got here as soon as I can from the far end of Tarapa. But it's good to be here. Thank you for coming out, it's a good number of you here today. I want to say thank you first of all for the honour and privilege to have been your mayor over the last three years. It's been a strange old couple of years, but I'm proud of the team that I've had around me and what we collectively have been able to achieve. Because no mayor can deliver anything without a strong team around them. And some of my colleagues are here today who've had a strong hand in the success over the last three years despite the weird times. The issues that I think are critical, and I won't have time to cover them all off, but I am working very seriously around crime in Hamilton. And I had an hour with Minister Hipkins last night as a follow-up to my previous meeting with Minister Hipkins, looking to put pressure the government to give us some Hamilton funding and resources for crime, not all to Auckland. If you want to ask me about that later, I'd be more than happy to tell you more about that conversation. In terms of Hamilton, we need to tackle housing. We do need to tackle housing, because we still have an affordability issue. We need more rental property, we need more affordable homes. But we need to do it in the right way, in the right place. So we all pushed back on the current proposal for the three-story homes scattered across the city. There was not one single councillor who favoured government's approach. We pushed back, it is now law. So we're trying to put some rules in the district plan to combat some of the negative effects that we think that government bill will have. And remember, that was both the National Party and the Labour Party issue. The other one issue that I do want to clear up, and I've needed to, is the Three Waters. Not one councillor supported the Three Waters bill. We unanimously opposed the Three Waters bill. In the early days, well before it was law, or even a proposal, when it was in the idea stage, we worked with government to try and inform a better alternative. They didn't actually listen to our concerns enough, and so we unanimously opposed Three Waters. So those are two key issues. Crime, or three, crime, housing, Three Waters. There's a lot coming over the next three years. I believe with a good, strong, positive team around me, we can get through these times ahead. And it would be a privilege to serve you for three years. Thank you.
Sorry for the delay. Sorry for the delay, some deliveries after work, and that made me come a little late. I'm Sanjay, I'm the pharmacist. Hello. Sorry for the delay. I wanted to do some medicine deliveries, so it did a little bit of that. I'm a pharmacist. And last twenty-seven years, I've been serving the community in Norten. And I firmly believe that if there are thousand problems, there are ten thousand solutions. And if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. Simple example, I found that medicines can only treat the disease, but not contribute to wellness. So I started yoga. When I found that that's difficult for people, I started laughter yoga. And now I'm starting, in my area, junior chess club. Because we know a lot of young people are not doing what they should, and we are seeing all those kinds on the TV. So this is my answer to be part of the solution. If I get elected, my first priority will be what I've been seeing in my community. What I'm seeing is a lot of elderly people don't have city council-maintained toilets in our area. And you know, because of medicines, a lot of elderly people can have problems. Similarly, we have parking problem. The cars are parked on both the sides. They have problem, they're hiding any place to go. Why can't we have parking space? I feel every councillor should be first responsible for the community surrounding five kilometres in his area. Solve the problems which are not going to cost a fortune, which will not increase your rates, and then think of the bigger areas. I have also a lot of ideas about housing crisis, or Three Waters, and so on. But this is not a time, the time won't permit me to talk about all that. And only when I solve problems from a local area, then I'll think about those big problems. My second strength is that I have both a business, and a small business. So I am by nature a very tight, frustrated person. All the mega projects will be on hot. We believe in existing resources. So this is my second strong policy, and you will find your rates won't go high. Please vote Sanjay number-one for Hamilton West. Thank you.
I'm standing for the two Maori seats that have been new in the council this year, called Kiri Kiri Kua Wai. And I'm a descendant of the Hauraki Waikato electorate, both here at Waikato and Hauraki. To vote for me, you need to be enrolled on that electorate role. And you also need to be a citizen, a resident of Hamilton City. I support the arrangements that council has with Teo Māori. We have Waikato Taewi, that looks after our river, and any things to do with our organisation, Waikato Taewi. They have arrangements with the council, co-governance, I believe is one of them. We have another Ropu called Tehau Tepeua, which is made up of Manufiua, Mahanga, Wairede, Tamailupo, Koroki Kahukura, Edaki Hoga, Edimang, Edimang. And I support, although our seat that we're standing for, the Maori wards, is going to be, the person's going to be put in by the electorate of our area. If I was to be elected, I would support the Maori Ropu that are already there at the table with council. So we have Manufiua, who has jobs to look after their resources of land and water. And then we have Maile Maori, which was selected from the groups I've just mentioned. They sit at council level, and they speak on, they vote on council matters at the committee level. Then we have another Ropu made up of the four, or Te Fa o Ngapakatupuake, who oversee everything. Te Ruangamau or Kiri Kiri Rua is the other Ropu that sits there with the council. And they look after Maatauaka, all our other tribal whangarei that are here from outside the Kiri Kiri Rua area. So I would advocate to support Takatafinua, Manufiua, and also Maatauaka, who have a right to be in the Teiti O Waitangi. I believe in the law that acknowledges the Kiri Kiri O Waitangi and the special treaty with Maori in Crown, Kiura Tata.
Gareth, I must apologise. I was supposed to give you and councillor Yon Wilson's apology, and I didn't do that. And he's a West Ward councillor, he's currently working at the moment on hearing for Peacock Plan Change. And he's done a great job this term. Well, he's left it up to me, I'll be thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, dying ten seconds ago.
So I want to put in forward councillor Yon Wilson's apologies. He is currently sitting, working hard on a hearing for Plan Change Nine, which is Peacock, or Plan Change Five, one of those, there's so many. And he's been Chair of the Hearing and Engagement Committee this term, and Deputy Chair of Economic Development. He's been on council as long as I have, fifteen years, although he's sort of come back a couple of times. And look, he's really supported us in terms of community initiatives, cycling and bike mobility. And he's a really dedicated, hard worker. So if you consider a West Ward vote for councillor Yon Wilson as well. Thank you. Kiura.
Okay, we've come to the fun time of the evening where you get to have a say. We're going to do it in a very orderly fashion. We're going to start with a walk-off by asking a few questions. We've got these boxes out of the community, and some of the community members have written questions they want. We have a big, we have a confidence task for candidates. We ask all for choice of all, just give them another round of applause, bye-bye. So we'll ask a couple of these questions, and we'll pass the time over to you. If you do have a question that you'd like to ask a particular candidate, or all of them, I'll get you to come up this way, and I'm going to form a line over here, because this doesn't go very far. Unless you want to ask a question, I'm not here. Right, okay. First off, we're going to get someone to put the ball up. Yeah, we've got you. The balls, they're all balls, wrong there. What's our name there? Matthew. Matthew, this is a question for you from the community. Matthew, please step forward. What skills or experience will you bring to the decision-making table?
So this week, I've actually just graduated from a Level Four Certificate in mental health and addiction support work. I supported living facilitator. I've worked in the disability sector since 2013. So accessibility is one of my top priorities. I push children and adults around in wheelchairs on these footpaths, and I think that's one of the key accessibility issues. I also, I'm passionate about accessible playgrounds as well. Ploughlin's Ark is about to be upgraded with...
Sorry, I can't tell if you've gone on a tangent, I think. What skills do you bring to the table to help everybody?
I believe I could work with anyone around the council table, no matter what their thoughts are. If I want my ideas through, I could work in a collaborative way, a respectful way as well. And I think I'll bring that around the council table.
Who's our next poll? Shanti. I know it sounds like it.
I thought I'd check my... Good evening.
What is the importance of the Maori seats to you? How is it?
Hi, you guys. Okay, we're talking about the Maori seat. Look, I came from the country I born. I spent only sixteen years, and the rest of my life is here. And over there, I only knew rich and poor. But when I come here, then I found out that we all are equal. So if you will ask me about the Maori seat, please, why not? Because we all are together, no matter what, it's only the face colour. Or, well, the things we do ourselves, is we do it for the choice, or we do it for our family. So for me, make no difference, whoever you choose, Maori seat, here.
Listen to all the candidates. Who here has a class four or class five licence? Anyone?
Sorry. Say it again.
Question was, are all the candidates here, who here has a class four or class five licence?
My husband does.
Otomation. It's getting harder to get around town, because someone who has a brilliant idea is sitting in a grave, but he's in front of them. They go as the trucks bear. If you're aiming at cars, hit the cars, not the trucks. Second point. There's a lot of people trying to say, we want to get public transport going. Ask the bus drivers how they can even fix the routes, because some people have an idea of what they call a street manager on bus routes, and block the buses. If you want to drive it, you won't like it.
Three for fourth for council, and if you're, if you're likely to win, then you're on stairs and drinks. And the next person, we're going to ask a question fourth.
Yep, I'm Murray from Shaws Birdback.
I'm Murray.
I've been fighting the council now for five years. Fighting for the Shaws Birdback. There's one thing. As we're stirring the pot, the plot is thickening. Believe you may be that we're going to fight this council to the end. The second one is, this council, especially with Peacock, are flying a seven-four-seven plane as they're building the plane. They haven't even got their motors on this plane yet, because they haven't done a lot of the soil testing. They're coming up and saying it's only going to cost the East West Broke thirty-four million. How do they know? They haven't done any lot of the testing. So this is what we're up against. And how they can afford it is beyond me.
And whose name on the, on the ball you got there? Have you ever thought of the ship that says beat the floppers?
And the birds. Floppers and the birds, flopper.
Yeah, yeah, floppers and like floppers. And this question is for Bruce. Bruce, your question is, I'll start from zero to ten, how important is it that you become a regional councillor? Zero being the worst, ten being the best. You want us to think that might be one of the four options? Hey, how important is it to, from zero to ten? There's only a follow-up question, so I don't know about ten. So zero being the worst, ten being the best, how important is it to your regional councillor?
It's a ten point five.
Yes, I'd like to know how you'd rank it on a ten.
Kiura, I've been watching the environment. I've been an environmental scientist for forty-five years. I've been working with the community, trying to repair the environment. I'm watching the continuing degradation of our environment, and I'm asking the question, the guys that had the opportunity to keep this in check have had all the time since we had a catchment commission in the Waikato. We have a regional council now, who have actually had the instruments at their fingertips to make significant change in the approach. I won't give you too many examples, but I'll give you one classic example. It's called peat soil. And the amazing emissions that come from peat soil that we don't appropriately manage it, if we don't keep the water table high, we have carbon dioxide coming off, and we have the sinking, the subsidence of the land. All I'm asking you to think about is, look at the Netherlands, look at Holland. They have been managing peat soil for more or less two thousand years, and they have miserably failed, because now they have to build seawalls around their country to stop the water from entirely inundating their country because of the subsidence of peat. What's happening in the Hauraki right now? Raised sea levels coming, that we have to confront. Soil subsiding. And a council that wanted to support further drainage of peatlands in the Hauraki and subsidise a pumping operation. That's why I want to get into council. We've got to do something about it.
If any of you are listening at ten point five, you probably don't want to vote. Do we have another, more, other questions? Does anybody else have a question? Does anyone want to ask you what you think?
Bruce, I just want, on the subject of environment and the world weather patterns, how equipped are we in the Waikato to sustain one of these horrific weather patterns we're seeing all around us?
That's a really good question, because, you know, we're, we're moving into some climate coming up now, where we're going to potentially be having way more frequent, high-intensity rainfalls. And we're also moving into a scenario where our median temperature will continue to rise by at least one point five degrees. We are gonna find in our city, if we do not keep good tree cover and build appropriate infrastructure, that our, our, the place where we live is gonna continue to get serious and hot. So you know, we've got to do something about that, and in terms of the flooding issue, that's the regional council's role. We're gonna have to have properly maintained stop tanks, we're gonna have to have proper buffering and ways of ensuring that we collect water in our big weapons and buffer us against further flooding. The, oh, it's all staring us in the face, but the question is, how much are we investing in protecting ourselves for the future? But most of all, how are we gonna protect our agricultural production if we continue to spread development across high develop, uh, high-grade soils, versatile soils, the best soils of all? That's why recently the central government brought in the national policy statement to protect those soils. The regional council has had more than twenty years, and the tools available in local government to prevent the loss of high-quality soils, and hasn't done it. That's why central government finally had to say something. We've got to be very careful about understanding the relationship between different aspects of government, and why, you know, we can't just point at central and say they're trying to stop us from doing something. We're basically gonna be taking some of the key decisions ourselves, so that they do not have this devil's plot.
Can somebody else have a question?